Alderman Catalano?
Here.
Alderman Jacob?
Here.
Alderman Lazara?
Here.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Here.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Here.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Here.
Alderman Winger?
Here.
Alderman Woods?
Here.
Mayor Police?
Here. I declare a quorum present. Please stand and join the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need a motion to approve the city council minutes of August 21st, 2014.
I make the motion.
Second.
Any corrections? Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes. Do any citizens wish to be heard on matters not listed on the agenda? I have no written communication. Under Mayor's report, the Cub Scouts could not make it this evening, and we do have a liquor request for an AR liquor license. Just looking for direction if we're going to bring it to a committee next week. Right? Should we just go down? Do we need a motion, Mayor? No, right? We just need direction. Anybody have any questions before we take direction?
Yeah, I do.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Question with this liquor license, I know in a letter that was given today, so there's no video poking going in there? Poker? At all?
Well, that's what the letter says, but, you know.
No.
I mean...
The answer is no.
But, you know, we all know that once you give the license...
And he's taking the whole entire building? Is he taking the whole restaurant?
I don't know. I did not speak to Shirley.
I have the answer.
Go ahead.
Okay.
He's taking two storefronts. Do you want to know where it is?
I know where it's at, but I believe that's a three storefront.
Well, three.
Well, I'm just asking.
Yeah, that's where he's going. And no, there will never be video gaming there. Because if there... I talked to Angela, who is the manager of the shopping center, and she said in the contract it's going to say no video gaming. So there you go.
Is that going to be in writing? I mean...
It's in the contract. I assume it's in writing.
Well... If the lease prohibits the operation of video gaming on the premises, they would not be allowed to have video gaming without violating their lease.
So could that be a stipulation?
Even if it were allowed by law, if they're agreeing in their lease not to have video gaming, they couldn't have video gaming.
Is this a... Well, since we talked about the lease, is this a one-year lease? Is it a multi-year lease? I mean, since we're talking about the gambling in the lease, I mean, are we setting lease policies now?
I can answer any question.
Okay, would you go up to the podium?
You have to go to the microphone, sir.
Sure. What is your consideration?
My bother.
Mr. Murray, he's here.
I'm leasing it. There will be no poker game, so ever. I run clean, professional, Italian-American restaurant. I don't know anything about gambling, but I got told, excuse me, to say that because obviously to get the legal license, which I never think about any video game. I don't even know what kind of business that is. You can check my background. I've been in the business over 10 years. Nobody in the VAS ever. I can do that in writing and contract, whatever you want.
No.
Could you state your name for the clerk, please?
Murati. M-U-R-A-T-I. I can write anything you want.
Okay, would you ask him to answer his question here?
He answered my question.
He answered how long?
He answered my question.
Alderman Woods?
I was just going to say, can we... I don't think that this is the place for all the questions and answers. Can we just give direction to staff to bring it to committee and...
We could.
Move forward?
I just... Okay, somebody had some questions. I know those questions before the meeting, and wanted to give a chance to speak.
All right.
All right. Go ahead. Most of Frank.
I'm going to abstain on this.
Okay.
Yes.
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 Abstain.
Yes.
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Okay. So basically, that's a... It'll be discussed at next week's committee... Right, next week's meeting. So this is just direction for us to move forward.
Absolutely. Anything you need, I'm right here.
All right.
We're good?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay. I have nothing else under Mayor's report. City Manager, you have a report, please?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of items. First off, as I mentioned, a four-pray fest for next year has started to be planned. I do have a question for the council. Are you willing to locate the fest off-site next year? I know we had this conversation last year, and then we ended up not doing the construction for the safety improvements this spring. They will be done, so we'd like to hit the ground running and move quickly with this. So we're well-prepared, so I need some direction on asking the Partister Con School District if they would host the site. So if everybody's okay with that, I'll proceed with the request to host off-site.
We'll start this end this time. Jean? Mike?
Yes.
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 Okay, thank you.
A couple other items. For those residents who are interested in the Elgin O'Hare 390 tollway project, there is a new section up on our website where you can sign up for e-blasts specific to the Elgin O'Hare project only. There'll be some construction logistics on there and other project information, and that gets updated as things progress out there. So it's on the homepage if anybody at home's interested in information on that project. Third item, on Saturday, September 20th, and Sunday, September 21st, the city has a citywide garage sale event. More information can be found at the Clerk's office. And the last item, for those of you that do not know, we had a rather significant water main break over the weekend. It's going to require some asphalt repairs on Irving in excess of $10,000. We will be working with contractors tomorrow to get a final price, but it will exceed my authority for spending limits, so I'm notifying you that we'll need to do an emergency expenditure to fix the asphalt on Irving, and we'll have those prices, and I'll email them to you after I have the information, but you'll see it on a future list of bills.
Alderman Wesley?
Question. I thought it's always been our policy when it needs to be emergency repaired, regardless what it is, it's an interest of authority without the council.
Who would be able to afford $20,000?
I thought that was our policy.
Right, but he just said he's just letting us know. Go ahead, Mr. Manager.
Yeah, I have to let you know when I do it, so I'm letting you know.
You mean, you're letting us know?
I'm letting you know. Instead of calling everybody, I'm just letting you know tonight because of timing, saving phone calls. That concludes my report.
Alderman Catalano, you had something?
Yes, in respect to the Elgin O'Hare, can we have a guest speaker come to the Senior Citizen Club October 1st? That's the first Wednesday. They could address that club, explain to them what's going on as far as the construction.
Mr. Murmas?
Part of H.R. Green's contract deals with some citizen outreach and information about the project, so I can certainly talk to them, and we'll have somebody there to explain it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And nothing else? That was it?
That's it.
Thank you. Next, consent agenda. We have five items on the consent agenda. Entertain a motion to approve...
Make that motion.
Do you have a... Okay. Do we have any objections to any of the items before I move on? Roll call. Oh, hold on.
Number 2A.
Number 2?
The...
The roof?
Yes.
Remove. Under other business. Item number 2. Okay. Peter, you were the motioner, so you agreed to the removal, correct? Frank?
Yes.
Okay. Any other objections? Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes. Now entertain a motion to approve the four remaining items. Item number one, a resolution authorizing the city of Wooddale to extend the duration of approved list of engineering firms an additional three years for current program and to... Quin... Quenial? Quinquennial program overall. Overall.
He's going to stutter on that one.
Item number three, a resolution seeking to approve a contract between the city of Wooddale and Accurate Tank Technologies for the purchase of a fuel management system in the not-to-exceed amount of $14,964. Item number four, a resolution for maintenance of streets and highways by municipality under the Illinois Highway Code. Item number five, a resolution seeking to approve an agreement between the city of Wooddale and Central Salt LLC for the purchase of anti-icing agents in the not-to-exceed amount of $113,058. Do I have a motion?
Make that motion.
Mike? Peter, a second? Any questions? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. Next, committee chairman reports planning and zoning. Alderman Woods.
I have one report, Mayor. Resolution seeking to approve an agreement between the city of Wooddale and the Yuler Nelson Consulting LLC for preparation of construction documents and contract administration for the Wooddale clock tower in the not-to-exceed amount of $64,000. That's my motion.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Alderman Roy Wesley?
We have this clock tower that's going to cost... They say the high end is $604,000.
Okay.
And this coming out of CPI. My question is, why aren't we taking any of this from the hotel tax? So that's the first question.
Okay.
Second question is, the CPI comes out of the utility tax. So next month, or whenever we're going to talk about the water bills, we're going to sit up here and talk about cutting the... Hopefully saving money on the water bills. Why don't we start... Maybe we could cut on the utility tax a little for a couple of years and save some money here instead of having a clock tower for $750... For $604,000.
Well, we might be able to just repay the money back from... From hotel tax. Mr. Murmas?
Yeah, the revenues in the hotel tax on an annual basis are somewhere in the ballpark of $300,000 to $350,000. It does have other expenditures in that account, so you'd have to save multiple years out of that account to do that. The site was budgeted for within the regular CIP. So you could do that, but it'd probably get more complicated.
But in return, return on this too, there's streets falling apart in Ward 4, Ward 2, Ward 3 that needs to be redone too. I mean, how do I sit here and tell my people that I'm spending $750,000, which is allowed, to do a clock tower, and I got Forest Preserve Drive falling apart? Curbs are falling apart in Elizabeth Park. I have streets in Ward 3 need to be redone. I mean, I'd rather see this come out of hotel tax. If it takes three, four years to do it, so be it. Or cut the utility tax and give the people back their money. That's what we're up here to do, is save people money, save on their tax bills.
Brad, do you want to comment? I say we're getting up. I mean, we could make a repayment plan like we did with the train station, right? There are the metro lot or whatever, how it worked out. Go ahead.
Correct. Yeah, you certainly could do that. Just from a budgetary standpoint, the actual construction of this isn't in this fiscal year, it would be in next fiscal year. So certainly when we get into December, January, starting to talk about the budget process for next year, this is certainly something we can look at, or the CIP would be in November, December. We can certainly look at different mechanisms to pay for that if that's the wishes of the council.
You have a follow-up? Go ahead.
That's fine. I'm looking at $64,000 tonight. So... I mean, let's have some discussion about it if that's the case. About taking out a hotel tax. I mean, I'm not going to sit here and vote for something like this out of the utility tax.
Did you have another question? You said that was the first one. Do you have a second question?
No, not right now.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
You know, we've done this in the past, that we borrowed money from tourism fund to pay back. I believe it was the streetlights we finished off. We took money out of the CIP, and then we refurnished it back. You know what? $64,000 we're going to design this clock tower. Believe me, $600,000 down the line, or $700,000 it's going to cost. My question is, I don't even know when I'm going to get construction tearing up here yet. That date has changed five times since construction. We talked about bearing ComEd lines in the near future here. Where's that money coming from? CIP, where's it coming from? I think the point is, we need to pull the reins back a little bit. Am I against a clock tower? No. Am I against $600,000 for a clock tower? Absolutely yes. Okay? I think the discussion needs to be taken now before we pass it and move forward with $64,000. I think we need to have a long discussion. So my question is, I think this should go back to committee to be discussed again. Because there's been some raises, questions on this. Memo's, what's it costing us bearing ComEd lines? We haven't even got that. Where's that money coming from? You know what? There's too much going on here right now. First of all, we don't even know when the shovel's digging over there yet. We don't even have a date. So to delay this another month to have a nice conversation on where we're going to pay for this, I think that will be the smartest move. So I'll make a motion to table back the committee.
Second.
Okay, call the roll if you want to table.
Alderman Catalano?
Didn't we... Or you have a motion?
You can't... There's no discussion on a motion to table, so...
But didn't we have a motion on the floor before that? That's my question. I thought I made the motion, and Peter seconded it.
Right.
And there's a motion to table, and a motion to table sends it back.
So if you don't want to table, just vote no. Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
No.
Alderman Jacob?
No.
Alderman Sizmarski?
No.
Alderman Lazara?
No.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
No.
Alderman Woods?
No.
Okay. Now we're back to the main motion. Alderman Woods, you had your hand up next.
Well, I was going to address some of the questions about talking about it. We have talked about it. We've talked about it over a year. We've talked about it when we put it in the strategic plan over the years. We talked about it when we put it in the budget. This is over a couple of budget years. We've saved the money. We have talked about it. The problem we never get anywhere here moving forward is because all we really want to do is talk about it. I understand maybe some of the frustration, because I agree with Alderman Roy Wesley, that there are some other things that we can do, fix streets and curbs and all that. There's probably never going to be an end of those things that we could do. But we also have to, with the city in mind, move forward and improve its position in the business community also. And that's what we're doing, and that's the whole thrust here.
Any other... Alderman Lazara?
You know, one of the main concerns that I've had asked was what we're going to be doing on Irving Park Road because of what it looks like. In campaigning and just meeting people on the streets, it's always about Irving Park Road. And I think this is a good point, and that's why I'm supporting this. We also are talking about being able to make some money on the clock tower, such as advertisement. Am I right on that, Brad?
Mr. Wilson?
That was part of the conversation.
That was part of the conversation, and I think it's something that we really should look into. So we don't take the brunt of the $600,000. We can make this thing pay for itself.
Right, that'll be a discussion later.
Correct. And that's why I support it.
Alderman Winger?
And there's discussion about looking at the tourism fund. And to me, the tourism fund is not a never-ending well of money, and it's really there to promote tourism. A clock tower will not promote tourism. And this, to me, is a capital project, and that's the exact way that I'd like to see it done. Shall we move forward? If it's an issue of, do we do a clock tower or not, this one thing, but it is a capital expenditure. Thank you.
Any other questions? One more? Yes.
No.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
So we're going to take this out of the CIP. We're not going to take it out of hotel tax.
Mr. Murmas?
We're not going to take it. So every Alderman that votes yes for this clock tower tonight, when you talk to your residents and stuff, and they might say, "Well, why you take it out of my utility tax?" I hope you have an answer for it. And I know what you're... I know what everyone's saying up here, but we're taking out of their money. And I'm saying that we could take from the hotel tax little by little, if it takes five years to pay it back, or 10 years. At least we're using it to hotel... And you could use hotel tax for that. Correct, Mr. Attorney... Mrs. Attorney? Mary?
Well, you know, the proper use of hotel taxes is specifically for things that you believe will bring the tourism community into the city of Wooddale. If you believe that the clock tower is such that would attract people into the municipality, you've got, you know, you've got a legitimate claim to it. We have one Alderman at least who doesn't believe that that's the case, that it's more of a capital project. That's a decision of order, Captain.
And Mr. Wilson, Mr. Murmas already said that could be discussed at council. Right, it might only be $30,000. You might be able to take out of tourism, if indeed we can use it. I think we'll be able to, but again, that's a discussion that you've already said they're going to have, correct? Mr. Murmas?
We march to the beat of the council's direction, so tell us what you want us to do, and we do it.
Okay, did I get a quick question here?
Do you have a follow-up on that, or is it going to...
I want to follow.
Follow-up? Go ahead.
If we continue to go with the 60... If the $64,000, whatever it is, $64,000 does get approved tonight, I want to have a discussion about how we're going to pay for the rest of it in the future.
Mr. Murmas?
Yeah, and we'll have that discussion. Just so everybody's clear, the $64,000 was budgeted this year out of the CIP. And as Finance Director Wilson stated, the construction for the tower is out of future years, so you can discuss that expenditure at that time. And the other revenue source for the capital projects fund is the non-home rule sales tax to go along with the utility tax, just for FYI.
Alderman Jacob, you are next.
I do support it also. You know, if the money comes out of tourism, that's fine with me. I do disagree with Alderman Winger. I think it will bring in tourism. But then, you know, again, I don't care how we pay for it, but the city's got to move forward. We've been talking about this for years, and it's like Alderman Woods said, we keep talking and talking and not doing anything. It's time to get things done. Thank you.
Alderman Winger, you are next.
I'm becoming concerned that, you know, if we approve something and we don't agree on how we're going to pay for it, I don't believe that that's appropriate either. So I'd like to know how we're going to pay for this, and if we try and change it down the line, that's one thing. But right now, tell me how this is going through. Are we saying this is coming out of the CIP and funded by those funding sources? And if the funding source changes, we would have to vote on that. Is that correct?
Mr. Murmas?
Right now, the $64,000, which is the design plan for the clock, is coming out of budgeted monies within the CIP, which is funded from the non-home rule sales tax and the utility tax. Any future expenditures on the construction of the sign, you'd get to talk about this winter.
Okay.
Yeah. Again, if we choose to take some money out of tourism, whether that be $30,000 or $50,000, whatever's left, that can be moved at budget time, transfer of funds. Very simple. Alderman Lazara, you were next.
Thank you, Mayor. To me, this is an investment. This is an investment that the entire city, including every resident in the city, is making. A strong downtown has been proven over and over again to increase our property value. This is an investment. That's why we're doing this. This isn't just to throw away their hard-earned money. This is to improve our property values. This is a start. And if we don't believe in this, then why don't we just keep status quo because Irving looks terrible? This is an investment, not wasting their money. We want to improve their property values. This is a start.
Alderman Woods, you are next.
Yeah, I was going to echo some of the same things Alderman Lazara said. The other thing is to have a community that people want to be in, live in, be active in, have places to walk to, things to look at, as opposed to beat-up, rundown stores on Irving Park Road. This is a big step, and it's somewhat disingenuous to wait till the bottom of the ninth inning after we've talked about this a dozen times and then worry about where we're going to get to $64,000 from. We put it in the budget. It's in the books. The Finance Director, I mean, it's all set, so I'm confused at why that's an issue. I understand the concern, the amount of money that we're spending, and that, again, you can always spend it on something else. But if we don't start somewhere to improve the city, the city's going to die. Period.
I was going to call a question. We're going to keep saying the same stuff? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
No.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes. That concludes your report?
That's the end of my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Health and Safety, Alderman Roy Wesley?
No report.
Thank you. Public Works, Alderman Lazara?
Sorry, no report, Mayor.
Thank you. Finance and Administration, Alderman Sizmarski?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Under Other Business, we have item number two of the consent agenda. A resolution... I'm looking for a motion to... Resolution seeking to approve a contract proposal between the city of Wooddale and Sterling Commercial Roofing Incorporated for the roof repairs at the North Waste Water Treatment Plant in the not-to-exceed amount of $15,810.
I make that motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Questions?
Yep.
Roy? Alderman Wesley, I'm sorry.
Matt? I was looking through the bids there. There's $15,000 difference.
Oh, that's right, you were out last week.
Sorry, I wasn't here last week.
Go ahead, Mr. York.
Yeah, so Sterling is doing work at the treatment plant on some of the other buildings, so we reduce their mobility fees and stuff like that, so that's why it's such a lower cost. They're already doing work on the site with the Phase 1B projects. So while they're here, they're just going to do this workforce as well.
Oh. Okay.
Good. Alderman Eugene Wesley?
So that raises a question here. So, that raises a question here, it was 15, 15,000? Okay, so, does that raise a question, did that go off a bid?
Yes.
Well, I'm saying, all of a sudden now that they come back?
That's why I brought up the question, there was three other, three bids, correct? If I remember right? And two of?
Well, I heard you said they did a little work for the treatment plant and?
Yeah, no, no, but the other two bids were higher, they were about almost 15, almost 14,000, something like that? Correct, Matt?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. Next, approval list of bills, September 4th, 2014, Alderman Sizmarski.
You have other business? No other business?
Oh, I did other business.
Okay.
That was the item number two.
Oh, that's, sorry. You have a list of bills, September 4th, 2014, at 408,671,021 cents.
Is that your motion?
That is my motion.
Do I have a second? Okay, Alderman Woods, second. Questions? Any questions?
I have, I have one on H.R. Green, I forgot what page it's on.
H.R. Green?
Yeah, for the engineer's study on Irving Park Road.
Well then, we'll find it.
Page six.
Page six? Who's gonna take this one?
I, I just?
H.R. Green right here, the north, which one, the treatment plant upgrade?
No, the intersection.
The 16,000, $66.99?
Right.
Mr. Murmas? Go ahead.
They are in final design phases, they're working on right-of-way land acquisition, finalizing design for sidewalk placement, for coordinating with ComEd for underground utilities, project is progressing towards the January bid letting.
So, could I back up here?
Go ahead.
Down the ground, burying the cable, the wires, was that a final vote that we were going to bury the cables? Why are we doing engineering on that if we don't, we didn't?
That was ComEd, correct?
Council decided not, we haven't voted 100%, we needed a price tag.
Mr. Murmas?
Yeah, they're coordinating with ComEd on the logistics of that project, seeing how much it would cost, they have to do the legwork to get you the answers, and the council voted on doing the legwork.
I think that was about 30,000, if I recall?
That sounds about right.
For ComEd, to do it, to give us the plan or curve, right?
And are we gonna make that letting?
Go ahead, Mr. Murmas.
Uh, I'm not gonna say 100%, yeah, you said yourself, they already changed it five times, so, I don't know, I'm not psychic, they're, they're planning on January 1st right now.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.